In accordance with the governor's executive orders, the Illinois Department of Public Health Regulations and the Centers for Disease Control Guidance, the city has determined that in-person meetings or meetings conducted under the purview of the Open Meetings Act is not practical or prudent, therefore, remote participation is permitted. This is the meeting of February 4th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina? Alderman Sorrentino? Alderman Sisnarsky?
Here.
Alderman Eugene West?
Here.
Alderman Arab Wesley? Alderman Woods? And Mayor Police?
Here. So is Sonny not here?
I didn't hear him.
Okay.
Art's not here either.
Nope.
Art texted me, but I don't know. I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Somebody's connecting to audio. I don't know who that is.
There's somebody that's Samsung.
Yeah, there's Samsung.
I just let them in.
Here's Art Woods. He's coming. So it's Sonny. Sonny's on mute.
Hi, girls. How are you?
Hi. Okay, Alderman Sorrentino, we're doing roll call.
You are. Did you call my name just now? I'm here.
Just now.
I'm here. Hi.
Hi, Alderman Woods. It looks like he's still connecting.
Yeah, that's the one connecting to audio. I think he's still connecting.
Alderman Woods is here.
That was Kate. That was Greg.
And Mayor Police?
Here. I declare for present.
I don't see Art.
Sleep in and join in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
To the republic which stands.
Which stands.
A nation.
Under God. Under God.
Invisible.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
That boy, Peter, like a Japanese movie.
We said Alderman Woods is here, right? Is that correct?
I.
Yes.
I didn't see him.
He's in.
Yeah, I see him. Okay. His audio is okay. Hi, first, I need a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2021.
So.
Second, Alderman Wesley first and Alderman Sisnarsky second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, communications and petitions. Jeff, do we have anybody with public comment this evening?
Yeah, sorry, my mute button wasn't working. No, we do not.
Okay, I do have a couple of written communications. One is from Ms. Hannah. She would like to thank the excellent police department and excellent fire department personnel who put their lives on the line to protect their citizens. I commend the staff for everything they do to enhance Wooddale and protect its citizens and for helping her out this past week. She had a real issue and she wants to give them a thank you. Also received a letter from Kathleen DiNoprio. She just wants to wish a big thank you to the Wooddale Fire Department, police, and electeds for assisting her family. They had a send-off parade for her. She was deployed EPT US Army and she says, "Thank you again for being a wonderful community, and we are lucky to have these days for being so kind to my family."
Very nice.
Next, Mr. Murmings, are you going to mention about maybe warming centers this weekend or is that going to be on the website?
Yeah, correct, Mr. Mayor. We are opening as a warming center this weekend as well as into next week, and we will be sending out a reverse 911 to that effect as well.
Do you have anything else under your report?
Just real quick, the budget hearing is going to be, or the budget meeting at committee is going to be February 25th, and it's looking like pending continuing good data from DuPage County. We're looking at that meeting in person.
Okay, great. That'll be great. All right, is that conclusion report?
It does.
Thank you. So we have three items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Alderman Wesley, Alderman Sisnarsky second. There was no objections, is that correct, before I take roll? Okay, roll call, please.
He's on mute.
Yeah, it's connecting. Yeah, we see you're trying to connect. It keeps blocking you out, Lynn.
It's only something trying to buzz in.
Wind gusts are unbelievable here.
Yeah, driving down 80 from Des Moines.
Yeah.
Yeah. What are you talking about here by the Golden Gate Bridge?
I know. A little windy here. Bridges swaying. Or I am. I can't figure it out.
Alcatraz back there?
Yeah. My second home.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Lynn seems to be having a little problem connecting.
Muted.
It keeps blocking her out. I can take a minute. Your honor. No, I just, the roll call. Could I call the? Yes, you can or I can. Okay, I'll do it real quick while Lynn is trying to connect. Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob? Did we lose Peter?
He was switching.
Sounds like it.
Jeff?
He's back. I just let him back in.
How about Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Jacob?
Peter.
Well done. He might be switching. Keep listening quietly.
He's preparing for Starbucks.
Picking up a brain.
Peter is off right now. Do we just?
We got enough.
World, can you?
Oh, is you that go to an iPhone, Peter?
Thanks. Stop with the comments. We're being recorded, please. Yeah, if he's not on the, if he's not able to be identified either by video or audio, then mark him temporary out at this time is 7:39, and then when he regains, just say he re-entered at whatever time that is.
Okay.
All right, and that passes. Thank you. I feel Lynn's microphone, I think, is back up. So next, we need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item one, a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for Professional Services for the Veterans Memorial Land Sweeping Project in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Item number two, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Wooddale and LRS Clean Sweep Incorporated for the Citywide Street Sweeping Program, three years in amount not to exceed $180,000. Item number three, a resolution authorizing change order number two to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Roll call. $500,000, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Wesley, Alderman Sisnarsky second. Roll call, please. Go ahead, Lynn.
Catalano?
Yes.
Jacob? Alderman Messina?
Mute.
Yeah, I'm trying. It's not letting me. Yes, sorry, it's sticky. Yes.
I was having that problem too. Okay.
Yeah.
I read your lips. I'll say yes. You went silent.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And Jacob?
Yeah. Hi, I'm back. Those to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
You're muted, Peter.
Yeah, no report.
Thank you. Public health, safety, and judiciary and ethics, Alderman Sorrentino.
No report at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Planned and entered administration, Alderman Woods.
I have one report, Mayor. Mr. Wilson's going to give a little presentation, but before he does that, I'll make a motion to get it on the floor, and my motion is to approve the fee schedule as presented with two changes. The first change is on the ordinance, section four, change effective date from May 1st, 2021 to August 1st, 2021, and the second change is to add $5 to section 7.821A of fixed cost. That is my motion.
Second.
Third.
Mr. Wilson, do you want to, you had a couple of things you wanted to go through if you want to take over?
Hold on one second. You're adding $5, so that makes it a total of 20, correct?
Well, the $5 to the fee that's presented on that schedule.
Oh, I got it. Okay. Because it's already need the changes.
Because it's our, right, as presented, so, right. Increasing it above $5.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Wilson, go ahead. Quick presentation, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Spare me one second here. Okay. So, I know, kind of gone back and forth on this for a while, but really, the point, the salient point as to why, you know, we need the increase. You know, we talked about the decrease in consumption over time. So if you look at the two highlights here, you know, we're down and rounding a little bit, but, you know, 60 to 70 million gallons per year in consumption, and then coupled with that, the revenue over that time, due to the decrease in the stagnation in consumption, has gone up about $600,000. The debt service for the treatment plant is about $1.9 million. So the debt for the treatment plant, 1.9 million, revenue's only gone up 600,000. You can see how that becomes problematic with that $1.3 million delta in there. Curiously enough, this lack of consumption, the drop in consumption, if you multiply that times our current rate structure, comes out to about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. So the rate structure that we were working off of based on the consumption back in 13, the Baxter and Woodman study, was sound, but for this drop in consumption, that's now necessitated this increase to make up that additional shortfall predicated on the largely the drop in consumption over the past few years. That's really the salient point to the conversation.
Okay, excellent.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. No problem.
I got it.
So basically, just for everyone knows, this is, this is to pay back the loan we have on a treatment plan. So there's no reason why we can't, we have to increase this in order to pay that loan back. It's for everyone knows that. That's what it's for.
Yes. That's why, that's why I wanted Mr. Wilson to put that slide up, and he should add another one that says, shows the losses that, without the increase. Anyways, I do have one question for Mr. Cage. I was looking for it. Nothing's redlined. So did we add that roof? Do we straighten out that roofing permit stuff?
Yes, we did. Correct.
Perfect. Any other questions before we go on?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, did you want me to bring up the other slide or not?
That one pretty much tells it all. We could put it up there real quick. Basically, it shows our operating expenses, revenues, and then at the end shows losses.
This slide here, if I may, just goes through the cost for utilities department, which is the potable water, the drinking water, wastewater, and what we're spending in capital, the transfer out. This is a total for the operations and capital. The revenue, this 22 is a proposed number, and then here's where we are just from an operational standpoint, and then when you layer on the debt, then you can see what the results have been the last few years. So negatives are bad, and then, you know, this is a proposed, and this was based on the number that was passed at the meeting last week. So obviously, with the change tonight, that number will be going, these numbers will be going up, but this was the model built as of last Thursday.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Yes.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Can you put the rate schedule back up?
We don't have a rate.
The water schedule that you hit up, Brad?
The first slide.
The first one?
Right.
Sure.
What's the possibility of us doing kind of a step increase? You know, I got a lot of feedback after last meeting. A lot of people are not happy. It's almost verbatim, slap in the face, give me $40. You want to revive, you know, the city, but yet here we're hitting them with another $15. Not my words, but you have to understand how this looks like. I know this needs to be done, and I think I've done a pretty darn good job explaining it back to, but if you pull up slide two, Brad, are we, are you showing a net gain in 2022? Or is that to offset all the negatives in prior?
That game, that game, if I can climb in while he's getting the slide, that game includes us increasing it. That's only if we increase it.
Well, right, right, right. Based on the proposed.
Hold on. We got to be hold on, so we're recorded, so it's not confusing.
I'm sorry. I.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson, you want to reply?
Yeah.
You got to speed up now.
Sure. Yeah, so Alderman Messina's question, yes, we're showing a gain based on what was passed at the committee meeting last week. I guess, for lack of a more eloquent phrase, the problem is you've had five years in a row of losses, and, you know, and we're, I mean, the cash balance in the water fund is effectively zero.
So every year it's zeroed out. Right, so is that, I guess, my question is, so that's a positive 225 that we would end up with at the end of 2022? Is it a rolling cumulative number at the bottom?
Let me, let me answer that real quick, Brad. So that's small net gain, so if we have any water main breaks or any emergency fixes, that could be due up fairly quick, and we never know what's going to happen with emergencies, and again, the treatment plant.
So why couldn't we do a step increase? Why, why, we're making all these assumptions. Why couldn't we do a step increase where if we need it, we can bring it up again later in the year and assess if we need that extra $5 that I believe Alderman Woods proposed? I don't remember. I couldn't find it. Someone mentioned it. I think it was initially 10, and then I think Art Woods brought up the 15. Why can't we stick with the 10?
It wasn't 10.
I'm sorry?
We didn't have 10 in there.
Okay, what was the initial number? Somebody told me 10, so I'm just going off.
Initial was 15.
Hold on one second. So Brad, correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but we needed about $20 to get us somewhere to the positive again. 15 just barely puts us over, but then we would need at least another 5% a year.
Next year.
We've got projects on the books, so, you know, stuff like the INI, we had to increase work because we have some major issues over in that ward, and what happens if those sewer lines start collapsing because we're not getting to them?
There's, there's a lot of what-if scenarios that you're pushing out, Mayor, and I can appreciate those what-if, but at the same time, what if people can't afford to pay these increases, and then we're stuck in a deficit because we can't collect? There's a lot of what-ifs. Why can't we propose a step increase, get what we need now, and then if we do need to increase it again later in the year, we do that?
Well, you need 15 now, and you're going to need more next year, and I have yet to see the councils step up and say, "Let's push some projects back. We seem to keep adding more." I've been saying it for years, and it's come to the point where you either start deducting projects or let the projects move forward.
Or we drive businesses in, which has been kind of our goal this whole time, right? Our idea, our model is built on consumption will rise based on businesses we drive in. I think we've done a pretty good job of it, maybe not the best, and obviously COVID didn't help, but people are also getting smarter with usage.
Right. That's the biggest problem. If you look at the first slide, you'll see when the treatment plant started to be built was about 454 million gallons, and since the treatment plant has been finished, we've kind of leveled off the last four years to 386 million, basically 60 million gallons. And if we were getting that extra 60 million gallons per year, we wouldn't have this situation, unfortunately.
But can't, can't we see the impact, COVID-related impact? Sorry, Sonny, I'll stop right after this. The COVID-related impact, maybe reassess in like August, September, or maybe Q4, October, and then decide if we need to do another step increase?
They've already been pushed back, but we have a motion, we have a second, and let the motioner, are going to start changing their motion.
No. Can I be?
Good.
Yeah, and, and I can appreciate wanting to move it back, but we're here today because in 2011, when we came up with the numbers that were pushed through on 2013, nobody wanted to raise the rate because everybody tried to think that there was another way to do this, and the facts are in front of us. It's kind of like the gas price. When gas goes up to $4, people drive less. Unfortunately, there's two. We got a double, double effect here. One, people get smarter and use more water conservation sensitive fixtures, right, which reduces consumption. The other thing that happens is the big users, the large businesses that consumed a lot of water, those businesses are gone, and the businesses that are replacing them are logistics companies that take 150 to 200,000 square foot buildings, have five bathrooms in them, and they don't use 1/10th or 1/100th of the water, maybe a manufacturing business that was in its place did, or a huge office complex that used to be there.
Right, we just collected them.
The reality is that we have.
We've just, if you look at the numbers in 2020.
Alderman Woods, finish your statement, then we'll go to Alderman Messina.
Okay, well, essentially, the numbers are in front of us. That, that, we're not making them up. It's not a projection. They're, they're actual numbers. The rate's been going down. That's the history. There's nothing on the immediate horizon to prove otherwise, and to me, it makes more, I get what you're saying, but instead of dying to death of 1,000 cuts, we need to put it to the number that was humbled with. They modeled it and projected it, and that number was $20. In the future, then, under your scenario, if, let's say, the apartment building comes online, that's 240 apartments, well, that won't happen until 2023, and 2023, we can assess it and lower it. I'm also okay with sundowning the loan. In 2033, we can reduce the rate by, I discussed with Brad, and that number was around 10 bucks of that rate, and then three years later, the other loan will sundown in 2036, we can reduce it another 10 bucks, so essentially eliminating this. If we want to, at a future meeting, I would love to see us memorialize that and put it in to eliminate that, but right now, there's nothing in history, nothing in fact, and nothing in modeling to prove anything other than we need to raise the rate, unless, the only thing that's going to stop us from doing it is eliminating projects.
Have you recognized?
It's all there.
Go ahead.
Right, in modeling and in forecasting, there's something called a sandbox. It's a what-if scenario, or our worst case and our best case. You know, if I look at that bottom line number that's highlighted, we've collected 7.5 million dollars. People are home. That's the reality, whether they like it or not, they're consuming it. I would always agree, if this was not a year of COVID, that it needs to happen, and I'm not saying it doesn't need to eventually happen, but that number, if we want to say the numbers don't lie, well, there's that number, 7.5 million. I don't think this is going to change. I have not heard of one business saying we're going back 100%. So we're going to collect this number, whether people like it or not, they're going to consume it. All I'm saying is, can we do a step increase so we can just minimize the impact? The first impact crushed people. This is just going to crush people even further.
Let me make a statement to that, Randy. So 7.5 million dollars in revenue. The second slide shows you the revenues total, and then you add the debt. And the debt, and that's based on, with the increase, and it's a small positive. In 2020, we were negative 1.4, almost 1.4 million dollars. Those are the numbers. And listen, I've said it many times, even I tried to, years ago, back in 2012 and 13, let's, let's do this slowly. We can look at it every year. Unfortunately, the water consumption has gone down. I've also mentioned if we do something, we can put in a sunset, and at some point, we can look at this and see how it's working out. But if you look at the second slide, 1.4 million in 2020, 500,000 down in 2018, 2.1 million in 2018, those are all negatives. We cannot continue at that pace unless you want to put a halt to every project, water, water project, because where the money came from the incentives for the businesses did not come from the water fund. We never took that money out of the water. So these are two different parts of money, and I know that's hard for people to understand, and I know we're going to get a lot of slack. I, listen, I don't like it either, but those are the facts. Did you have a follow-up, Alderman Messina? Otherwise, somebody else?
No.
Can I be recognized?
Alderman Messina, did you have a follow-up?
No, no, I want to hear what others have to say.
Alderman Catalano, go ahead. You were next.
Yeah, so as far as rolling back projects, this is probably a question for Brad. With all the programs that we have, the backyard 50/50, discant removal, the generator, the rain bio, the streetlights, the 50/50 apron parkway, senior cutting grass and the facade program, how much money can we save if we, we're not stopping, we're just rolling it back and delaying these projects? How much money can we save if we, we're not stopping, we're just rolling it back and delaying these projects? Uh, so it's a question if Brad can answer that.
So all those programs, Alderman Catalano and Mr. Wilson, you can verify it's roughly he would dial a ride and everything.
Excluding, excluding, excluding dialer ride. That's out of the question.
It's going to be somewhere around 150,000. Mr. Wilson, you have, you know, that number by chance?
Yeah. So the water subsidies, um, the, the water discount, the senior discount uh, is around 64 to 65,000 per year. Uh, the garbage discount, the flood brothers and the senior one is another 25,000. So you're at 90,000 right there.
We're not going to touch those.
We're not talking, I didn't say that, the discount for the seniors.
I understand. Yeah.
But talk through the programs, Tony.
Yeah. Um, the skunk program is about 8,000 a year. Uh, the generators about 3,000 to 5,000 a year. The tap-ons for the, uh, the incentive for the tap-on fees. Uh, we budget, I believe 50,000 a year for that. Rear yard drainage is 24,000 per year. And then, um, the, uh, the senior, and I know what I do, getting away with this, but the senior vehicle stickers are free is another 20,000. So.
And the facade?
Uh, the facade, we budget 150, 150,000 per year for the facade.
So how much roughly, it's more than 150 a year that the mayor said 150, but.
And the facade money basically comes from a different, does not come from the water fund. Remember. None of these projects come out of the water fund.
No, I understand, I understand. Can I, can I be, I understand that. I'm just saying, how much can we save in rolling back projects? If we're talking about rolling back projects to say, you know, to save, that's what I'm talking about. I understand that the, uh, that doesn't come out of the water fund, but that's.
Yeah. So the facade program is enhancing the entire city's look, feel and worth, right? You start getting rid of projects like that, you're going to slow things, some things down on the other side to compensate for the water. So even if you take up 100,000 for these projects and leave minimal amounts in there, 1.392 million dollars was the loss in 2020. 100,000 does not get us close. We, we, we've been putting the gambling money in there. Naturally, last year we probably wasn't much. Uh, we've, we've tried all kinds of things. It's come to a point where we have to make a decision. And you know, stopping stormwater or sewer projects is probably not the smartest thing because that's what was done before these, this council was established, right? They used to do nothing and now we're trying to play catch up. And unfortunately we had to do the treatment plant because we had many issues. That's the bottom line. It's a simple mathematics. I would love to say, hey, don't raise it ever because you know, I don't want my water to go up either. I'm looking at the numbers and I have to be realistic. If I was fixing my roof, would I only fix half the roof and wait five years to do the other half? No, I'm going to do the whole thing, whether I got the money at that time or not. So Mayor, Alderman Smar, Sorrentino, you were next.
Oh my God, I almost fell asleep. Thank you. I think what we need to understand is that if going forward, first, this doesn't take effect till August. And when we come back to the tables, eventually it would be nice to come to the tables and discuss lowering the rate. Instead of keep coming back to the tables, having these crazy conversations about how not to raise the rate. It's inevitable. We've been back doing it for years. We must go through with this, set a precedent. We'll be the bad guys for a short period of time, then we'll all be the good guys with white hats. Done. Thank you for recognizing me.
Eric, can I? Who's that? Alderman Messina?
No, Alderman Wesley.
Alderman Wesley, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I, I understand everyone's point here 100%, but keep in mind, guys, we need to do this because we got to do something with the other treatment plant down the line here. We need to put money away for the other treatment plant that's falling apart as we speak. So we could do it now? Or are we going to do a higher it down the line? Because remember that other treatment plant needs to be brought up to code two. So I have to say.
Any other comments before I take a call, roll call?
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Mayor?
Hold on. Who's that?
It's Alderman Jacob. I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I know we keep talking about moving projects back, but I guess I'm not clear here, but moving projects back, how, I thought we, I thought we can't take money. If we move a street project back, I thought we can't take that money and put it towards the sewer or in water.
No, the project, the projects I'm talking about is water projects, right? So when we do a street, we also do storm sewers and whatnot, right? So over in Ward 3, we need, as we start redoing those streets in Ward 3, we're going to upsize those pipes and finally connect to that southern portion. That comes out of water. INI, that all comes out of water. Uh, those list stations, we've done a few of them the last couple of years. Those are like 600,000 a piece almost. I think the last two years we've done one, right? So that comes out of water and whatever, uh, I know there's other projects that I'm probably missing. Uh, Mr. Wilson, maybe you have a better list than I do.
Yeah, I mean, those are the big ones. The other big one that's taking up a significant amount of the water capital the next few years is the Ward 4 INI project. Typically that was around 500,000. Now, due to the condition, I think we bumped the budget up to about 800,000 to, to get it done, to, you know, protect the pipes or fix the pipes that have collapsed over there. You know, we can drop it back down to 500 and then the project will take five years instead of, you know, two and a half or three. But in the meantime, you know, that system's just going to keep getting worse. So that's really the, the biggest driver right now.
Hold on, Brad, that INI, by raising it three years at 800,000, it's still going to take five years to finish that whole section out. Then I know when we ran into problems last year, we had to bump it up, I believe last year because we found so many issues. And that's why we increased it. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, the only thing I was going to say was, uh, also in the CIP was a water system study. And so that's going to bring forth, because there hasn't been a lot of water main replacements. And you know, uh, worked on, on the potable water side of the house for the last few years. And so, you know, there's no telling what that report's going to come back with. We're going to have to look to program that stuff in while also, you know, continuing the INI and, you know, extending storm sewers and things of that nature. So it's there, there's a lot on the, the proverbial plate of the water fund right now.
And Brad, you forgot, the water tower is still in there. Whether it's painted or a new one needs to go up because we pushed that one back. It's about 425, 450,000 just to get it painted and cathodic processes and whatnot. Or a new one of a 1.2 million dollars. So Mr. Alderman Jacob, you have a follow up?
Just one follow up. I mean, if we say to do this now and I mean, we could still, if things with COVID don't get, you know, things go backwards and we seem to be moving forward. I mean, we could still stop this from happening in August if we had to, correct? And we could, we could bring this up again if we had to.
What do you mean? If, if, what? If things got worse, you mean?
Yeah, I'm saying if COVID, if things went amok with COVID again and we went back to lockdown and stuff. I mean, we could always still go back and change. I mean, since we're saying it's not going to start till August, could we stop it before August or no? I guess that's my question. If we.
Mr. Wilson, I'll let you answer that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I, I, so technically, um, I'm not trying to oversimplify it, but if it goes back on an agenda and there's five votes to change the rates in the masterpiece schedule? Sure. Um, you could, um, but then, you know, the downside of that is if we go back to, uh, the, uh, the first chart here, bear with me a second. You know, then I'm going to add 21 and put less needed for the sixth year in a row for the rate increase. So if you put on an agenda and get five votes, sure. Um, but you're just going to continue the, the cycle that we've been on the past five to six years. But technically you can, sure. You're the council. Yeah.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
This is just a general question, but maybe it's for Brad. Have we, have we finally figured out that we need to be more vigilant in collecting with those that have significantly overdue past due bills?
Mr. Wilson?
Uh, sure. And, um, perhaps Attorney Bond could chime in too. But yeah, we've been working with the clerk's office to send letters to those people. Um, I believe at this point, there's only one that we haven't either started collecting from or, um, have worked a deal out with. And I know Attorney Bond has actually been in communication with that person and or their attorney. So, um, yes, we have been working those pretty hard. And like I said, I think there's only one that we haven't had some type of progress on, uh, at this point.
May I be recognized real quick before Alderman or before Attorney Bond?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Can we get line of sight to what these things are settling at? Because to be honest, I, I just not, not trying to be a spitfire, but it just, I, I want to know, I want to have line of sight to what we're settling for because if we're owed money and this could help close our gap, I want to have line of sight to what we're settling for. To be honest, we should be leaning these people for the full amount and more. So I, I'm very curious and maybe this is a future item. I'd like to see what we're settling for on these accounts that are passed due.
Brad, I'm going to make a statement. You can correct me. So when we settle, they pay for the full price of what they owe. But maybe there's some discounts given on some of the fines because some of the fines are compounding and whatnot. Is that true, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, that is true.
And you know how much we are owed regularly on a monthly basis by chance? Because I think the number is not what Mr. Alderman Messina thinks. Roughly 50,000, 20,000?
Uh, for these, you know, for the kind of the, the whale past due accounts, I, I would have to pull that up. I
Okay.
I have it up.
Well, when I looked at it prior, yeah, I think you were right. It was like 60,000 a month. That's what I recall.
Is that with the fines though?
I don't know. We only saw a bottom line number. That's what I'm saying. We have no visibility to this stuff.
We can get, we can get something from the finance department this week, Mr. Wilson?
Sure.
Okay. Who was, somebody was going to be recognized? I don't know who it was.
That was Attorney Bond, Mayor.
Go ahead, Attorney Bond.
Thank you very much. Yes, uh, the, the, you're correct. The, uh, the notices have been going out promptly. There are people that have had to have payment, installment payment arrangements made. Uh, but the bulk of what is out there is, uh, is interest and late charges. And those interests and late charges compound. Uh, and so that they're, they look significant. Uh, but the actual water usage, uh, and then some of those fees and, and late penalties are being paid. There is some negotiation of, of those, uh, those penalties. For example, I think one of them owes, uh, maybe seven or eight thousand. I can't remember exactly, Brad. And I think they're up to $131,000 in late payments and fines on a house that's been vacant. So, uh, you know, those, that's taken into consideration, but the actual usage. Uh, and then there's a standard sewer charge that is all being collected in full plus on each one of those accounts.
Can I be recognized, Mayor?
Alderman Messina?
Okay. So maybe it's, maybe it's a future item. So if I do the quick math, 60,000 times 12 is 720,000 a year. I'm sorry, but I don't want to shoulder on the backs of my residents, you know, two, you know, two, three, four people that just don't abide by and don't care to pay. So to me, we should be, we should not be brokering any deals. We should lean their property, get our money. We should, this, that would help close the gap.
That's false. 720,000. Listen, you, I believe you said in some of those meetings where the finance department, Mr. Bond came back to us and said, and some of these things, right, the fines with the compounding interest and all this stuff was about 70,000. The actual water bill was about 5,000. So we got the 5,000 plus a small percentage of the fine.
And that, and that's what I'm saying. Why are we, why are we brokering these? It, you might as well, it's just like going to court. We might as well Kim Fox it. Let people do whatever they want and then let them off with nothing. I'm saying maybe we need to set a precedent. And we need to say that you do not settle for less than 85% of what is owed of all the fees.
And we, and can I, if I could, uh, Your Honor, that we will, unfortunately, we would, the city would never uh, recover that. And then someone's looking at the, uh, reviewing our, the, because the compounding, having a fee or fine is one thing. The compounding, uh, what your fees and fines are required to be is reasonably related to the cost of administering that. And so those are very susceptible to a challenge in the, in the aggregate because we're compounding the interest and the late charges are compounding each month. So that's where we get these, these large delinquencies. And the reality of it is we're going to spend money trying to pursue that without any recovery on that because the people who can't pay their water bills, our experience has been they are not paying a lot of other things. And those properties, uh, will oftentimes go into foreclosure. There have been issues where there's been uh, some problem with the meter. And the problem would get, they, you know, they would get corrected and they would make good on the, on what was outstanding. But, uh, the, the collections have been, been extremely, um, extremely, uh, vigilant from the city standpoint.
I'm not doubting that, but if we could have line of sight to that, I'd love to see what that looks like. What we've been owed in arrears for the last three years versus what we've actually collected. I, I, I'm asking if we can get line of sight to that. I'd be curious to see what that number is.
All right. And Brad, when you give us that number, give us the actual cost of the water and sewer. And then the fines are a separate line item that Mr. Bond basically just said, we really don't collect.
Well, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't assess them. Why do we have these things if we're not going to assess them?
If I could address that, Your Honor? The, the reason we do that is to encourage the, the individuals. We get more than what their usage is as part of it. And by having those and knowing that it is a continual and increasing uh, cost to them potentially, that has been a tremendous value to the city to be able to get these matters resolved, get the, the individual caught up and collect on the, on, on the, you know, some of the fees and, and costs that we've, uh, we've incurred. So it, it serves a, a tremendous, uh, purpose from an enforcement standpoint. Otherwise there, you remove those and you remove the incentive for the, the.
Why not, why not lean Attorney Bond versus settling? Why don't we just lean their property for the full amount?
Well, we do. We lean it. I'm sorry. Yeah, we do, uh, we do impose liens. There's certain, uh, certain things you have to do under the Lean Act uh, in order to do that. And, uh, and the finance department and the clerk's office have been very good at, at doing that. We work closely with them on those. And there are some priority liens that take, uh, take priority under the law. Uh, some municipal liens. So we've been, that has happened and we've gotten some collections on that basis as well.
Okay. Alderman Wesley, you have a question?
Mayor, if I mistake, we already started taking roll call.
So we should be discussing. I, Peter, I thought somebody was trying to ask something. I said, there's another question. I didn't hear any quick. And that's a problem with Zoom, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. The, the point is, and I discussed this before, liens don't do nothing for us guys. We don't make money on liens. You could lean a house, lean everything you want. Bottom line, you ain't going to get nothing out of them regardless.
Eric, can I?
Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you. All right. We've, we've discussed this. We, we can bring it up. Brad will bring forward the information. This isn't the place to debate, uh, how we handle collection of the water at this point, although it's an issue that needs to be talked about. So Brad's got direction. He'll get that information to us as soon as possible so that we can have a.
So Brad's got direction. He'll get that information to us as soon as possible so that we can have a broader conversation with the numbers in front of us and not be speculating. Uh, that being said, we have a motion, we have a second.
Mayor? Hold on.
May I be recognized, Mayor?
Hold on one second. Alderman Woods is speaking. Go ahead.
Right, I, I was, I was just gonna say, we, we've covered that, and we have a motion in a second to call the roll, but that's up to you.
Right, go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I'm just saying, if I have, if I have fellow council members that are, are on the fence as to why. And they're thinking to themselves, wow, we have a clear issue potentially, that's my opinion, or gap in collecting these. I, I think this is a valid topic because they may not want to raise it that much. We may want to maybe take a second look at this collection process and then decide, all right, you know what? Not enough there. Let's up it up a little bit. Let's up it up a little more. I just, I just don't agree with the amount of the increase.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Smarsky.
Call a question.
That's not a question.
I said, I called a question. I'm done.
Don't worry. I asked, any other questions? No more questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yeah.
And that passes. Okay.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approve all of the bills, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills dated February 4th, 2021, in the amount of $1,161,512.65.
Second. That was your motion, correct, Alderman Woods?
That, that was my motion.
Okay, second by Alderman Wesley. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Hello?
Alderman Messina?
Yep, I'm stuck on mute again. Sorry. Clicking it multiple times. Um, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, uh, we do need executive session to, for land acquisition, no items to be referred. So we need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Wait a second. Two seconds, Sonny?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
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 And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Just hang tight while the Mr. Murphy clears the room.